Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Cousins is going to lay out a revised schedule for zoning application. And before that happens, that will last for a couple of minutes. And if it's okay, okay with the council, I'm going to take something off my council communication, on the mayor's communication tonight, and just talk about a memorandum for you all to consider at a further meeting. Okay? Mr. Cousins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We've been working for a while now to narrow down the text of the T-42B zoning district, and then to work on a schedule to apply that to certain land areas to meet the objectives of our comprehensive plan. Throughout that process, there have been a number of changes made to that text by the council or recommended by the planning board. So for the schedule of that adoption, you had a first reading at last July 18th meeting. Tonight's staff recommends to allow for the public hearing at the planning board level to make sure that they have the exact text, the final version, that the council would like to see moved forward, that you actually vote down the adoption of the T-42B text tonight, and take a separate vote to refer that text along with the map of the Court Street area. So it's all packaged together very clearly, and the planning board can hold their own public hearing on that. We recommend that you refer that back to planning board. That schedule would look like this, based on the meetings that are already scheduled, both the council and the planning board. Tonight, if you vote that down, refer the package of the T-42B text and the map to planning board for their September meeting, that would be on September 13th, 6:00 p.m. And the council could have a first reading on September 6th, leading up to that meeting, first reading in public hearing, and then, as I said, the planning board public hearing on the 13th, and then that package of T-42B and Court Street could come back to council for September 19th as a second reading. Based on the changes that have been made, staff's recommending that the council do that to make sure that the public has a chance to be heard with the final version in front of them at the planning board level as well as the council. That would be our recommendation for action tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
No questions? Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of minutes, so trying to be efficient. I gave the councilors all and staff, and Mr. Holmes, if you could, I might have to refer to you. I want you to be close to a microphone. Let me give you a little background. So back in April, Mr. Holmes and myself reached out to the governor's office. We also reached out to Maine State Housing Authority with a program to jumpstart the building of auxiliary dwelling units for, within the city of Auburn, specifically in areas that are serviced with water and sewer, as well as other infrastructures, but primarily water and sewer. Hard to get three separate organizations to ever get their timing and everything working together. All three of us, obviously, we proposed it, but Maine State Housing and the governor's office both liked the idea, but trying to get everything coordinated was proving difficult. So what I am proposing for the council to consider, and there's no vote on this tonight, but I would like to see this come up at our next council meeting, August 15th, is to have Auburn apply for a pilot program with Maine State Housing Authority, which gives us slightly less than a match for our ARPA dollars or home funds or CDBG funds, whatever source of money we have that's not in the general fund, not a tax-based revenue source, in order to bridge the financial gap for homeowners to build their own ADUs. Now, in the memo that I provided, and for the public's benefit, I did a kind of an analysis on the high average for ADU construction of approximately 750 to 850 square feet, using some local vendors. That cost came out to roughly $200,000 for full construction, turnkey, pad, infrastructure, hookup, so forth. Knowing that there's a challenge in the kind of financing aspect, and Mr. Holmes, could you explain that a little bit before I continue?
So the challenge is, is that if you put an ADU on a current piece of property, you have a first mortgage on the first piece, and to separate that second dwelling is difficult for the banks. So they're looking for a higher level of equity in that property to start with, so they can secure just the building and still be able to make a loan that makes sense to them. So we have talked to a couple of banks, and there is a level of interest to look at this program and move forward with it.
So this program basically would allow in the form of a grant, up to 15%, no greater than $30,000, in grant money to the builder of the ADU or the property owner, the end owner. You can buy a shell of an ADU for 105. You could finish it yourself using sweat equity. That's on the homeowner. The only stipulation on this would be that they must rent this to someone that is making less than 120% of the low to moderate income rate for that household, with a cap of 30%. Rent cannot exceed 30% of that individual's income. So this really covers people that are entering in the job market, teachers, firemen, mechanics that are making 40, 45. 120% of a single person's LMI right now, I believe, is close to $55,000 a year. And it also covers our mother-in-laws, mothers, grandmothers, and so forth, that might really take advantage of that traditional granny pot approach. Obviously, that money would be split between Maine State Housing's pilot program and the municipality, and I'm putting in here ARPA money, but it could be other sources of revenue as well. Concept is, they cap this at five years. After five years, they can rent it at regular market rate. Now, obviously, this property is fully adding value and taxable to the city of Auburn, of course. And it also, as a goal, kind of provides a different layer and adds a variety of different housing options within the current housing market, and hopefully act as a motivator, if you would, for people to do this without grants and get more builders looking at the possibility of building ADUs as part of their overall portfolio.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Seven years.
Say again?
Seven years.
Seven years, five years for rentals, seven-year ban on short-term rentals.
Okay.
So five years on income, seven years on short-term. Any questions on this? Again, it's just an introductory memo. Staff really needs to work on this a bit and bring it back for further deliberation, workshop, and a vote. But ideal, it would be nice to have something done before people are planning next building season.
Just a quick comment. It's 120% of area median income, which is broader than most of the main housing programs. And main housing, I think you can attest to this, that main housing doesn't always have success getting their single-family home money out on the street, and this is sort of a variation on that. They're not using all that funding. They're putting so much into rental, they're ignoring this side of it. So I think it's a win-win for the city and for them to be doing something like this, particularly with those financing, you know, difficulties that you talked about.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's one of the things that excited them the most, is that they do struggle to get that money out for the single family.
Thanks. Dana?
Glenn, I wondered if maybe you could kind of speak to the available financing that we would have outside of ARPA?
So we would look at home dollars potentially to see what we can use there. There's potentially for some CDBG, but mostly home dollars would be where I'd be focused on. We'd also be partnering with Auburn Housing to do these projects. The way the pilot program is set up, we need to bring some other partners into it for collaboration. We've had some limited conversations with Auburn Housing on some of these things already. They're excited to come to the table to help out on the development side. And as far as match dollars for the state's money we can use, personnel time, all those types of things as part of the match as well.
So as far as a goal, or how many of these do you think we might be able to fund? What do you think?
Low end, 15. If they are all right around $200,000 and maxing out on the percentage on a grant, 15%, 30,000. But I think you're going to see more than 15. Some of them are going to be shells. And for anybody who's watching, and this is not a paid promotion by any means, but one of the leading companies in Maine that are creating backyard ADUs is BackYardADUs, plural, dot com. And you can see some of the prices and how they list out the financials, what it would cost you under a mortgage, and then obviously you apply your rent, and there's your pro forma. But it also gives you floor plans, concepts, but the price is ranged from $105,000 for a shell fully hooked up to utilities that you finish yourself to the max of around $220. But then you can customize down a little bit on fit and finish. So again, 15, ideally, I'd love to see 2025 built. And if we get 15 built with an Auburn, it's going to be noticeable. It will be a great thing to point to and hopefully act as a motivator for others.
And by adding in that budget, all those other things that are allowed to be contributed towards that match, we'd be asking for Maine State Housing more money than what we're talking about.
Do we have any idea of how many of these have already been permitted in the city?
Yeah, five.
I was part of the, was it five?
It was, I believe, five. They just did an analysis, actually. I believe we had five. Interestingly enough, most of the ADUs that have been permitted are actually even larger than the primary dwelling in which they lived in originally. They ended up selling the primary dwelling to children, so they could live at a bigger retirement home while the children lived in the main old house. So that's why our ADU law is so non-prescriptive, because there's so many scenarios where you could see someone on an empty plot of land, a small in-town lot, building this ADU as a starter home, you know, for themselves, and then adding a larger home later. So there's a lot of different flexibility here. But I believe it's five, which ironically was a higher rate on a per thousand basis than the entire state of California. Small sample size. Any other questions on this? Any other thoughts to make it better? Any other things that you want staff to look at? Yeah, I'd like to ask Councilor Milks if he could share this memorandum too with Auburn Water and Auburn Sewer to see if there's any other sources, if they want to hook more people up on existing water sewer lines as well as a way to kind of beat down some of that capital.
Some sort of a special, you know, waiving of a...
Waiving of the turn-up or the setup or something. More partners are better, even if it's an $800 or a $1,000, you know, allowance.
Yeah, some sort of a lowered cost or some sort of a grant of some sort.
Yep. Yeah, okay. Guys, thank you very much. Glenn, thank you for joining on the spot on that. Appreciate it. We'll now stand at recess for the next six minutes, and then we'll start our regular council meeting at 7:00. I'd like to call the order. This meeting of August 1st, 2022. Please join me in further pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, getting right into... We have one concern, excuse me, one concern item on the agenda tonight. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Second.
I had a motion from Counselor Staples and a second from Counselor Walker. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Pass seven zero. Next, the minutes of the July 11th, 2022, special city council meeting. Are there any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 11th, 2022, special city council meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Walker and Staples on the second. All those in favor? Pass seven zero. Also, we have minutes for the July 18th, 2022, regular city council meeting. Are there any corrections to know? None being, I'll adjourn a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Counselor Walker?
Second.
Second from Counselor Staples. All those in favor? Pass seven zero. Next, we have communications presentations and recognition. We have several communications that are in our packet for you to read. I'm going to move on. We are going to not have communication on public safety building. I'm going to move on to council communication. I gave my communication earlier in a workshop to help speed things along a little bit. Are there any counselors that have any communications for any events or anything listed for the public to know? None being? Okay, we'll move along. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Manager, you were sitting back and I haven't seen you.
Sorry. I appreciate it. I have a couple of things I just want to make sure the public's aware of. First is that on August 8th at 6:00 PM, there'll be a virtual meeting that'll be held regarding the assessing department. So, information has been sent out regarding assessing. We want to make sure the public's well aware of the valuation changes that took place through the process of commitment. And so, the assessor will be during a virtual town hall meeting, August 8th, 6:00 PM. Encourage people to go to the city website for access. There'll also be a public meeting that'll be scheduled in the future as well. However, this will be a virtual meeting for those who do not want to attend in public. More information on that second meeting will be coming out shortly. Also, tomorrow night is National Night Out, so encourage everyone to come out. That'll be starting around 5:30 PM at Festival Plaza. Be a great event. We'll have the Auburn Police Department showcasing several programs that they have, as well as our new canine officer and canine dog, Brick, will be out there. So, encourage people to come out. That'll be 5:30 PM till dusk. We also have the LA Harley Band will be there. So, it'll be a great event with food and refreshments for everyone to attend. That's it. Thanks.
Very good. Open this up to the first open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak, please step up to the podium, give us your name, address, and if you could kindly limit your remarks to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Angela Dow. I live here in Auburn. I work for the Auburn Public Works Department. I've worked for the Auburn Public Works Department for 15 years, and I've thoroughly enjoyed every minute of it. There's been ups and downs for sure, but I wouldn't change it. Normally, I would never dream of being here tonight to address you all, but I am concerned with the negotiations that are going on with the union, the MSEA union. In 15 years, I have never felt unappreciated. I've never felt like the work I do isn't important, that my presence at the highway garage isn't important. And I truly don't believe that any of you really meant any offense by not offering us what we think we are worth in terms of yearly evaluations and the cost of a living increase, which has been a bone of contention between the union and the city, which really, my heart is broken about this. We deserve at least two and two. We have single women who live alone, who have to get people to help them to do mechanical services, maintenance on their homes, maybe they have to live in a rental unit and are looking desperately for a place of their own again. Maybe they're a pregnant mom-to-be with her first child. The price of diapers and formula, if you can find formula, is astronomical. That little family could struggle. They could go without... That 2% might not mean much to you, but you know what? It means a lot to us. It adds up. And I feel like with a 2% cost of living and a 2% yearly evaluation, if you deserve it, okay, if we don't deserve it, don't give it to us. But I think we do deserve it. We work hard. We worked through the pandemic. We were all here, and we want to continue to be here. But there's places that would appreciate us more perhaps, but we don't want to give up on you all, and we're hoping you don't give up on us. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? None being, I'll close this first open session. Now, on to unfinished business. Order 83-06062022, allocating $300,000 of American Recovery Protection Act funding to create a two-year pilot program called Project Support You Auburn. This item was postponed at our last meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Counselor Gary, second for Counselor Whiting. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this order? If so, please step up to the podium. That being, okay, Mr. Holmes, I'm going to probably ask you to come up just in case. I know this is your project that you're shepherding. Bring it back to the council for debate. Counsel, any comment, questions for Mr. Holmes or internal debate? Counselor Staples?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, this looks like a great program. This is probably more for our city manager than anything else. But could you speak to the funding levels for this after two years?
Well, as this states, it is a two, it's a pilot program. My hope, and one thing that I believe we should be working on, is state initiatives as it pertains to this. This pilot program will be able to demonstrate good case study on the impacts that having a team like this that will be rolling out, how does that impact types of calls that the police department is receiving and how they respond? And I believe that this would be something that we can move forward. And there has been legislative action that has been tabled in Augusta, as we've talked about this statewide. I'm hoping pilot programs like this will be able to reinforce these types of initiatives and hopefully see a statewide response. Other than that, than it would require in two years to continue this, if there's no state assistance on this, that it would be an individual community response. And so, City of Auburn would have to determine, do we want to continue funding this moving forward after you've seen the data and the results?
Thank you.
Anything else? Dan, let's revote at this time then. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Pass at 6:1. Next is ordinance 16-06062022, which is approving the zoning amendment for 278 Poland Road. This is a second reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Counselor Staples, do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Walker. Very good. Open this up to the public for comment. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Anybody in the public like to comment on this? This is a second reading. Again, please state your name and address, and if you could limit your comments to three minutes.
Yes, Timothy Allen, 194 Pride Road. And again, I'd like to thank council for taking their time to read the correspondence, which I sent them again this week. And I know that I try to keep it short, but I know that you guys have a lot of information coming in, and your time is important. I just want to keep this to two quick statements. The first one being that the neighbors and I met together recently, and all of us were surprised when we looked at the updated plans and noticed that the council had talked about dividing the property, the parcel, along the eastern border. And the plan that we see, it was divided amongst, along the northern border, not what was discussed here at council. So, that surprised all of us. I know if you look at it strictly from the map, it's actually the north-northeast, so there was a small fraction of the east in it. The second item I'd like to say is I remember one of the counselors speaking at the last meeting, and he mentioned the fact of looking for a good faith effort from Hammond Lumber. And I can give you this example. Carol Lane has been complaining for three years since the lot across from her house was cleared, and they have had three years of listening to neighbors complaining about it, and nothing has happened. We therefore feel that we cannot take them for their word. We don't know if we can trust what they say here at public meetings versus what actions we see. And again, I leave it to you, the counselors, to decide whether or not this really needs to be rezoned to somebody that we can't trust if what they're saying is what will really happen. And again, it is a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this public comment? Or during public comment?
Good evening. I'm Carol Lane, 30 Arbania Street. Thank you for taking my comments this evening. The lot in question is a prime 1.75 acres residential lot in a good neighborhood, and there's no good reason to make it into an industrial lot. As the mayor stated, someone who's made a mistake should be given a chance to do the right thing. Hammond was given many chances and failed repeatedly. They have chosen to do nothing to correct their past mistakes. Drawing a map at the last minute with pictures of trees does not count as reparations. They could have spent this summer replanting, but they haven't, and I expect they will not until they are somehow absolutely forced to do so. How businesses interact with their community does matter. But that's a side issue now. More importantly, you, as city counselors, you can act in good faith. Your decision matters. Your job is to decide if this zone change is a good idea. If you are following any sort of a plan for our neighborhoods and the city, the plan is for more housing and livable neighborhoods, not industrial zones, replacing prime housing opportunities. Almost two acres of clear, buildable residential lot with water and sewer in place in a good neighborhood, this close to town. Why convert it to industrial? Why? Is this best for the people you represent? They have resoundingly said no. What could it mean for the future and health of our neighborhood? Well, location in business is everything. If Hammond is outgrowing their location, it is not up to the city to resolve that problem with an industrial-zoned parking lot. What if they do outgrow the location? What industrial use is next? A paint factory, a chemical plant? Now, it's up to you, my counselors, to have the decency and the foresight. For the sake of our neighborhood, please leave this 1.75 acres lot zoned as residential. Do not vote yes. Do change it to industrial zoning and then pass the buck back to the planning board. They have already spoken on this. The planning board thought it was a bad idea, because it is. They've already voted against turning it into an industrial zone. Now, it's on you. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this topic? If not, I'm going to bring it back to council. Okay, bring it back to council. But first, before we go into council debate on this topic, we did ask, we actually made amendments in the first reading. And Mr. Cousins, can you just kind of explain, or someone from Hammond explain, or Sebago Technics, what, how those changes were made? And again, I want to make sure that north and east is probably appropriately defined here. I'm looking at and assuming it's facing north, but I could be wrong.
So, it's not exactly facing north, and I think Jim can hear us out back. I thought I would be able to display this screen, but it's being displayed from out back. If we could zoom out a little bit further, you'll see the north arrow in the top-left corner of the screen. You can see that it is at an angle, probably close to a 45-degree angle. So, that right-hand side of the screen is the northeasterly side of the plan.
Eric, could you just bring up, I know you can't do it side-by-side, but the original map that was presented to us pre-amendment last meeting? Just so we can see the full scope of how our amendment actually came out.
So, I don't know. This, the parcel map that was just up shows the full parcel. The entirety of the front parcel at Hammond Lumber was proposed, including the area that is now separated from the parking lot by that orange and blue boundary. That was originally included in the proposed zone change as becoming industrial. Based on the council's direction at the last meeting on the 18th in the first reading, Hammond Lumber has scaled back the proposal to not include as much industrial land. And also to make sure that there's no possibility, I think, to address the council's concerns, that the parking lot in the future would extend more display area, commercial display area would extend into that residential area where the stormwater treatment area and the buffers are. And if Jim could scroll down a little bit further on the plan, you'll see at the back side of Hammond, it also shows a commitment that Hammond Lumber will look to provide additional screening for the areas of Arbania Street in the rear of the site that had been previously referenced by the public in the neighborhood meeting. And that's an area where there were some trees removed. It opened up some views towards the neighboring site at Safe Handling. Then they've committed to improving that as part of a site plan approval to add buffer back into that area.
Okay, as part of the site plan approval, which planning board would see and have to approve?
Yes, yep. And we have Steve Prey and James Seymour here from Sebago Technics and from Hammond Lumber.
Oh, I just want to make sure that we're not putting our toes in the planning board purview and trying to get into a potential site plan approval at this time. But this is, and counsel, I'm going to ask, is this what, when we voted on the amendment to the motion, does this correspond with the intent of the motion? Is there any objection of this? Does this not correspond? Okay, so I'll take that as an affirmative. Sir?
Yes, and I'd like to also point out with this configuration, there was a deletion of 24 parking spaces as well. I know that was a concern of this board and will also be a concern of the planning board going forward. So, due to the confinement of this zoning, you can barely see the old spaces on there still, kind of shaded in there that we've removed. So, there were parking there on the side, as well as those across the front that were basically condensed.
Can you just zoom in a little bit on that, please? Is that possible?
You can see the outline, the shadow outlines of where the parking stalls were before.
So, you shrunk the footprint of the asphalt?
Exactly.
The parking area down?
Yeah.
To give a further buffer between the asphalt and the industrial residential zone?
Right, correct.
Okay, I'd like to open this up to... Okay, I'd like to open this up to any questions or debate. Counselor Hoss?
Originally, when this was sent back to you, the concerns that we were hearing were headlights going into people's homes.
Correct.
So those parking spots there on the side haven't been changed at all, have just been brought back five feet.
They've been brought back 20 feet, actually.
20 feet, yes.
And with the planning board, as we've previously provided, there's still a stockade fence along the property line to prevent those lights from coming in. We believe that those can be addressed at the planning board level, and we're all open to various buffers and manners to cut down those streetlights, car lights, excuse me. For the most part, that's obviously a small window in the winter, but it is concerning to the neighbors, and we understand that. But we're committed to doing what we can to further deplete those impacts from car lights in the winter periods.
I guess my question would be, why wouldn't you just remove them?
We probably don't want to get into the site plan approval at this time. Very well.
I think regardless, the issue is usually also the circulation of the vehicles going around the end of that parking lot, and we have to have, for emergency purposes, circulation around that. So there still will be car lights regardless of whether we have the parking stalls or not. So to your point, I think that's an item that we can take up with the planning board for appropriate screening.
Thank you. But if this zoning doesn't happen, none of this project I've seen right here, including the buffer, could go forward?
Correct.
Any other questions or debate? Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming back with this new rendition and all the work you've done. Has this been made available to the neighbors and anyone else's heads' concerns with your project going forward?
This latest version has been posted to the city's website as part of the packet. We as staff haven't distributed it to individuals or anything like that.
So in other words, it wasn't made known that anyone that would like to see these plans could either come into the city office or even stop into Hammond Lumber to get more explanation of these plans?
We did a public notice for the public hearing, and we've been clear about when it's coming back, but we did not send a new public notice for this meeting as the public hearing happened, it was completed at the last meeting.
But a public notice will be sent out to all butters in preparation of a potential planning board site approval?
Yes, it would.
With maps and so forth?
To everybody within 500 feet of the entire Hammond Lumber parcel.
Thank you.
Question. I've been in this location a number of times. How did you determine how many new parking spaces you needed? And are you moving parking from behind to the front? There's a lot of new parking spaces.
We have 47 employees, so employees are moved over into that area, more so for safe travel, better lit area when it's in the winter months or so. We maintain the asphalt area and treat it and things. So we have 47 spaces that'll be employees. The balance was just determined, given the layout, the size of areas that we wanted to have for additional parking, whether it be retail customers, a contractor with a trailer on the back, give them a little extra room to move around. They don't often come in square perfectly into these places, so we tried to expand a little more room for that.
Any more questions or debate on this? I really think that, you know, looking, and I just want to reference an email we got pretty, actually later today before this meeting, from a butter on, I believe actually she's probably, her home is right there because she does have a pool. And that included some pretty good pictures directly from her backyard in Hammond. Obviously, there is no trees there, there is no screen, there is no buffer. It is a direct view. And I come back to the concept of site plan review at the planning board, and if this doesn't go through, that will be your view forever of Pineland, or excuse me, yeah, of Hammond Lumber, I'm sorry. Of Hammond Lumber. And I'm wondering if this is a very interesting situation where, in order to give hope for an increase in buffer, we actually have to pass this. Or not, and it is what it is. So I just want to kind of lay that out a little bit to you, but if you have a chance, you can look at those pictures. You'll see what I think she's trying to get across and what I'm talking about. Any more debate, question? None, I'm going to ask for a vote. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Hoss?
No.
Counselor Milks?
No.
Counselor Moran?
No.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
No.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
No.
Fail, six one. Next on the agenda is ordinance 18-07182022, extending the moratorium on public safety detention and correctional facilities. This is a second reading. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion, I'm sorry, Counselor Hoss? Second for Counselor Walker. Open this up to the public for comment. Anybody in the public like to comment on this? No? We're going to bring it back to council. Council, this is a second reading on this. It's a continuation of the moratorium for another six months post the expiration of that moratorium. Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that, I understand about the moratorium. Does this prohibit them from, if they have plans drawn to talk, to the planning board to get their input? I mean, to the planning and permitting to get their input?
For you, Mr. Manager.
So as long as there's a moratorium in place, the planning board wouldn't review any permit? They wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to take out any permit to move forward during that moratorium?
Right, but can they come in, no, can they come in and show them the plan so people in our city can get a better perception of what they're trying, their intent to do with their land?
Not at the planning board.
I mean, at the planning and permitting office.
Planning and permitting office is fine.
They can come in and bring in their plans and discuss what they would like to do?
Yes.
Thank you.
I hope they do. Any other comments? None being asked for a roll call vote at this time?
Counselor Hoss?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
No.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Moratorium passes, second reading, five two. Next is ordinance 19-07182022, creating a new form-based code district, traditional neighborhood development district, T 4.2B. Second reading, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Staples, second for Counselor Moran. Open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? If so, please step up to the podium, name, address, and three minutes. None being? Okay. I'll close the open session, bring it back to the council. Council, obviously you heard Mr. Cousins with the recommendation, staff recommendation. At this time, we'll open up to debate, or I'll ask for a vote. Is there any comments or questions? None, Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand the intent of what we're trying to do, but since Court Street isn't in it and there's other areas, I cannot support this until it's had a more of a proper thrashing out with our community and with the planning board. So I will be voting no on this.
Okay, ask for a roll call vote now.
Counselor Hoss?
No.
Counselor Milks?
No.
Counselor Moran?
No.
Counselor Walker? Counselor Staples?
No.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
No.
Okay, so the second reading fails by a vote of seven to zero. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules to add an agenda item. It would be order 121-08012022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Counselor Moran, second from Counselor Walker. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion to suspend, to add an agenda item, passes five two. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion that reads the following. Order that the city council hereby refers for consideration, conduct of a public hearing, conduct a public hearing and recommendation, a zoning text and map amendment to create and apply a new T-4.2B zoning district to the Court Street area, 1,687.41 acres, to the planning board at its September 13, 2022, meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Counselor Moran, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Counselor Staples. Yeah, I'm going to open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel, comment, debate? None being? Oh, Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I especially don't support this because I feel that this is a way to circumvent the citizens' initiative petition. People worked hard because they believed in what we were trying to do wasn't right for their side of the community. Others joined in that weren't living in that community. I support the person's, any resident's right to petition the city for a law or an ordinance that we proposed in that. And I'm ashamed at some of the tactics that we try to do in order to shake our citizens' initiative process, so I will not be supporting this.
Is there any other comments or debate?
Yes, I concur with Counselor Gary. I've lived in this community since 1954, and in my adult years, which would be a ton, almost 50, I have never seen a referendum with over 2,400 people signing it, a petition, to come before the city council based on its actions. I think we've been doing too much talking and not enough listening. And I think we continue to not listen and continue to keep talking, and I think it's going to be at our peril. So I will be voting against it as well.
Is there any? Excuse me. Is there any other comments or debate? None being asked for a roll call vote at this time?
Counselor Hoss?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
No.
Order passes by a vote of five two. Now on to new business. First is order 109-08012022, approving the liquor license for Make Do LLC DBA Auto's Pizza in Auburn, located at 730 Center Street. This is a public hearing, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Walker and second by Gary. Open this up to the public. Anybody in the public like to comment about a liquor license for Auto's Pizza located at 730 Center Street, next to the flagship cinema? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Debate, comment? I will say, it's been three years since I first reached out to Auto's to get them over to, side by each as a test market. They have been a great community asset, free pizzas to our fire, our police department, St. Mary's Hospital, and they really, really love the Auburn market, so I'm pretty excited, and they got good pie. Ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor? Opposed? None being, passes seven zero. Next is order 110-08012022, adopting the Auburn Lewis and Consortium Home ARP Plan. This is a public hearing and a vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Gary, Counselor Whiting with a second. Open this up to the public. Anybody in the public like to speak on this topic? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Council, discussion, debate, questions? Mr. Holmes is here, he can answer, on behalf of his staff that put this together if need be. Do you have your hand raised? I'm sorry, I can't.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, very good then. I'm going to ask for a vote on this, I believe, show of hands is an order. All those in favor? Opposed? None being, passes seven zero. Next is order 111-08012022, approving the proposed technical revision to the Tambrain's Two Municipal Development Tax Increment Financing Development, TIF, program. This is a public hearing, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Counselor Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Whiting? I'll bring this up to the public. Actually, before that, I'd like to turn it over to the manager as well, just to give a little bit of brief on this, because it is something that's quite rare. Or Glenn, Mr. Holmes, if you want to just kind of summarize this for me, and then we'll get to public discussion.
Sure. Back in 2002, when the TIF was originally adopted, it was approved and given a limited approval. And it was supposed to be paperwork was passed between the city and Department of Economic and Community Development, the state. Never got passed, nobody noticed for a long time. This spring, when we did the first amendment, it was noticed. So what the state asked us to do was go back and look at what we had spent the money on, and you'll find in your packet what we spent that money on, and then to update that of what we plan on spending money for the future in as well. And by having a public hearing and having a public process, just to make sure that all the Ts across and Is dotted, it's just a technical revision to make sure all the paperwork's in the right place.
Perfect, so thank you. This does not extend the time, this does not reallocate any money. This does not extend or expand on the reimbursement if there is a credit enhancement agreement in place on top of the.
That was already done back in February when we voted to.
So the credit enhancement agreement was done, settled. This is just, okay. Any other questions? Questions? Give me a chance? Anybody? Oh, good. Public comment first and foremost, I'm sorry, I skipped over that. Anybody in the public that would like to comment about this? None being? Bring it back to the council again, anything? Clear? Clear, ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor? Passes seven zero. Holmes? Next is order 112-08012022, allocating $1.6 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the upgrades and replacements of HVAC systems in our city-owned facilities. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Counselor Staples, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Counselor Hoss. Okay, open up the public for comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? If so, please step up to the podium, state your name, address, and let me your comments in three minutes. None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel, questions, debate, thoughts?
I'd like to move to table this motion for this order for three months.
We got a motion to table for three months?
So in order to do more due diligence on the projects at hand and the allocated money to make sure that we're getting a good deal for our money.
For due diligence. Oh, I've got a motion on the table, excuse me, to table for three months. It's a privileged motion.
Second.
I got a second from Counselor Walker. All those in favor, and a privileged motion, there is no debate. All those in favor of tabling for three months, please raise your hand. Opposed? Passes six one. Next on the agenda, we have a referred ordinance 11-03212022, repealing ordinance 11-03212022, amending the zoning district, Court Street City Core Urban Residential Area, 1,687.41 acres of urban residential traditional neighborhood development district areas, T-4.2. That was adopted on March 28, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Counselor Staples, second from Counselor Moran. Thank you. Open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this? If so, please step up to the podium, name, address, and three minutes.
Just a point of clarification, I didn't hear what the motion is. Is there a motion on the floor?
There is.
What is it? What's the motion again? Could you clarify it for me?
Please bear with me. It's a referred ordinance 11-03212022, repealing ordinance 11-03212022, amending the zoning district, Court Street City Core of Urban Residential Area.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, I'm John Cleveland. My address is 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. I'd like to focus my comments on the current city charter that was adopted in 2005 at a citywide vote. I was elected to that charter commission and chaired the nine-member commission that wrote that city charter. This charter commission wrote and included a new provision called the Initiative Referendum and Recall Provisions in Article Nine. This was the first time that it was ever included in the Auburn city charter. We used the Model City Charter Manual prepared by the National Civic League to guide the drafting of this Article Nine. This is a copy of the manual that we used. This section was included at the request of the public, who asked for means by which citizens could be more directly involved through direct democratic participation. who asked for means by which citizens could be more directly involved through direct democratic participation in city governance. We held many, uh, public hearings over several months, and that, uh, was very clear that they wanted this provision in the charter. This was a means by which their voices could be heard on public, on city policy and recalls through a citywide vote. Article Nine states that once petitions are completed, filed and found sufficient, section nine point six A requires the city councils either repeal the ordinance or to set a date for a citywide vote on that matter. In section nine point six A, repeal of the ordinance by the city council is solely intended to provide an option for the city council to reconsider the ordinance which they previously passed. It's just an opportunity for the council to say, we want to reconsider what we did based on these petitions, and, um, you either concur or don't concur it or to be repealed. It was not written or intended to provide a means by which the city council can then substitute a new ordinance in the place of the one they just repealed. Clearly, if this was allowed, the city council, any city council, could circumvent the referendum process and deny the voters their opportunity and right to vote to repeal the ordinance which they have successfully petitioned to remove. It was not an oversight in the drafting of Article Nine of this charter that a repeal and replace provision was not included in Article Nine. It was intentional, it was intentional by the members of the charter commission, which I have confirmed in discussion with several of them, that the repeal and replace was not included precisely to prevent a city, a future city council from circumventing the referendum process.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cleveland.
My three minutes are up?
And well passed, actually, but I wanted to give you the ability to finish your sentence, you're on.
Okay. Can I just say the last respect?
Mr. Cleveland, we have rules, I mean, just like you were pointing out earlier. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak?
Hi, my name's Ryan Smith, I live at fourteen Weaver Street here in Auburn. What I just handed to the city clerk was a legal letter, um, from Kristen Collins of Pretty Flatter T, directed towards the city council. It's the second letter sent to the city council essentially saying what Councilor Gary and Whiting had said earlier, what, um, John Cleveland had just said, and I'm gonna read parts of it. So this is, you're already placed on notice that the apparent plan to repeal this ordinance and replace it was a substantially identical ordinance would be in violation of the city charter and the right of twenty-four hundred voters who signed and recently submitted a referendum petition. Despite the legal and political concerns, the council has voted to move forward this process. The illegality and inappropriateness of this action under the charter bears reemphasis. The council, if it enacts the amendment, is making a deliberate end run around the citizens' referendum process. And when, when the charter provides that a referendum petition may be terminated by the council's repeal of the ordinance in question, it is referencing a true substantive repeal that addresses the intent of the petition. The council's proposed action will nullify the properly circulated and submitted petition without these voters having been given their rights under the state constitution, state statutes and city charter to have the ordinance in question repealed or their petition brought to a vote. So in sum, repealing this and replacing it, um, not only runs against the will of the planning board and the residents of the affected region and all the city, it subjects the city to risk of litigation and will create uncertainty that will discourage development rather than promote it. So I'm, that's part of the letter, I guess my own comments are, I'd love to see this go out to vote, so I think it would get absolutely annihilated in the polls, but without doing that, you're muddying the waters. So you can sit here and say eighty percent of people are in favor of it, and then we get twenty-four hundred signatures, and we don't have a chance to vote on it. I would say eighty percent would vote against it, and we'd see just how much everyone does not like this. So I would love to see this go to referendum, so we can see this process all the way through. I'll also point out, in many cases, when someone's denied a site review at Planning Board, they have to wait six months to go back. So I don't, I don't understand how we can do a whole petition referendum over months, and then you guys can turn around the next month, repeal it and replace it. It doesn't really seem fair to the process, and we even held community meetings that were more lectures than receiving feedback, and zero amendments came out of those, zero. Which shows that those community meetings were not meant for feedback, they were meant to be a lecture. So, I would just ask that you vote no to this, um, that we don't even send it back because there's no version of T four point two, B through Z that's gonna fit the ideas that we also have for our own neighborhoods. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak on this?
Good evening, my name's Jeffrey Hammond, I'm a resident of Ward Two, and I live at thirty-four Vista Drive. The item that's before you tonight is a, a citizens' referendum. The first time a citizen referendum has come before this council. A citizen referendum that contained twenty-four, more than twenty-four hundred signatures of residents of Auburn. A citizens' referendum that was circulated and submitted under the rights guaranteed to the citizens of this city by a charter that was written by the citizens and voted on by the citizens. Now, some members of the city council have said that they don't think that the message that's being sent by this petition is a sentiment of the, the whole of the city. And if that's what you think, send this to referendum, and we'll see what the citizens of Auburn think. Now, the, um, we have a situation where, um, the, we are attempting to repeal this tonight. And if you were to repeal this and then go forward with an actual planning process that used standards and accepted practices and had substantial input from the public, I would applaud you. I, I would participate in that, and the groups that I work with would participate in that. But if, on the other hand, what you're planning on doing is repealing this and then turning around with a preordained schedule to push through the zoning amendments that we've been seeing, I would say you're disrespecting every one of those people that signed that petition, and that is not what's intended in the charter. Now, all of you have an opportunity tonight to, to do the right thing, to stand up and be counted as somebody who listens to their constituents and someone who represents their constituents. On the other hand, you can stand up and be counted as someone who is willing to subvert the will of the voters in this city. And I would urge you to stand up and be counted as someone who does what's right, listens to the people that elected you and represents those people. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak on this issue?
Hi, I'm Dennis Bergeron, uh, resident of Ward Two. Uh, I participated in this process all along. I don't think it's been much of a process. I pay attention to all the things that go on in the city, I've watched all the planning events that have gone on. There's not been due notice on this stuff, there's not been due public process on this stuff. People in the city feel like you aren't listening to them. And I'll tell you, um, I circulated a lot of those petitions, and this is, you know, we're not talking just twenty-four hundred signatures. When you go door-to-door and you talk to people and you hear what they have to say, they're upset by what you're doing. They feel like the city council is not listening to them. Doing four point two B as a substitute, now that we have five fifty-five Court Street as an example, a visual example of what you're doing, is not gonna placate them. So I hope that you will take a step back, have a process, and listen to people. Thank you.
Stephen Beal, ninety-three A Shepley Street. Uh, although the council has already, earlier this evening, under the heading of unfinished business, uh, decided against, voted down, adopting the new form-based T four, two B and directed that this go back to the planning board, that matter is already over and done. I think it's extremely relevant to the discussion of T four-two to discuss what reasons there are for referring T four-two B back to the planning board. There have been suggestions here that T four-two B is just an alter ego or very similar to the ordinance now at issue in this present vote. But I think it would be very instructive if Mr. Cousins would be permitted to offer some discourse on what the reasons are for referring T four-two B back to the planning board to, to see, uh, what the differences between the two scope of ordinances may be.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
My name is Pam Rousseau, seven forty-five West Auburn Road. Um, I listened, I, I didn't go to, to planning board meetings, um, where they discussed the changes, but I did listen to them, and I had to listen to them twice because Eric Cousins speaks very quietly. I finally had to put on the, the words. And what I could tell, in listening to it twice and the following meeting, that the only difference is that basically, other than you can't do adult, um, businesses, is you just have to get permission. And I did not see any substantial difference at all. And so I think that this needs to go to a referendum. Now, I do realize, and I am quoting somebody, that they believe we live in a republic and we elect representatives to make decisions on behalf of the people, but the people want to be listened to. You have only lip service, we listen, we listen, no, you don't.
Bob Hayes, one seventy-two, Allen Allen, here in Auburn. Actually, a little different tack, I'm back to talking neighborhoods. And I think I closed out the last time I spoke, realizing that four point two B was creating possibly five hundred, five thousand five hundred some odd acres of one neighborhood. I wanna go back to the strategic plan. Part of the resolve, um, inside the first cover, City of Auburn is committed to safe, sustainable and livable neighborhoods. I go next to page eleven, and the sub, the qual, uh, growth subcommittee, there's, there are five goals, two of them I'll read. Develop clear identities for Auburn's downtown industrial park that considers scale, connectivity, use, integrity to maximize their appeal. Second, housing. Officially utilize current housing stock in sustainable targeted residential development that supports and attracts growth residents and workforce. Then if we go to page seven, final recommendations, uh, two from, again, the growth subcommittee. One, protect Lake Auburn and all other bodies of water. Two, define neighborhoods, support rehabilitation and beautification. Those two really have given rise to the two petitions that have come before you. Going to page twenty-four, under housing, uh, with respect to, to do just what I read, solution, a second, well, one of three solutions is create more pride in neighborhoods. And as a subgroup underneath that, define the neighborhood geographically. City to facilitate by providing geographical boundaries, et cetera. Examples, downtown, East Auburn, New Auburn, and we can name several other neighborhoods. And under that, a second, let residents name and brand their neighborhood. City to facilitate the process by coordinating neighborhood meetings and providing historic information, maps and photos relevant to each neighborhood and/or properties within for use in marketing and branding the neighborhood and highlighting the unique features. That's part of form-based planning, and that's what we've ignored through the process to date. And the schedule that we had before has now changed a little bit, uh, is not allowing that still. So I think that's what we're looking for, is get the true neighborhoods that exist in, involved in the process. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this topic? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Cousins, I think Mr. Beal had a great idea, a great suggestion, Mr. Cousins, if you could come forward. Could you explain the differences, um, between four point two and four point two B and the, how they are substantial enough to require a new process? And let me just be clear, what we're doing is a clean slate, new process. New public input, more meetings, more notifications, uh, by neighborhood, okay? Delaying it, allowing this process to happen again. Uh, so, Mr. Cousins, if you could, please?
So, so early on, earlier on in the discussion, the, um, planning board had made a recommendation on text for the T four-two, uh, the T four-two district and its adoption in the Court Street area. Um, that came to planning to a council, and the council, uh, I think it was Councilor Hawes that made a number of motions at that meeting to actually amend, um, the text of the T four-two district to address some of the concerns that the council was hearing and that the planning board had heard. Uh, Michael Malloy, our council at the time, um, noted that those changes, uh, were substantive, and in order to make those changes, we had to go back to planning board to have another public hearing because they were substantive. Uh, the council, um, not wanting to delay in that way, uh, the T four-two zone, uh, was put in place without those changes. Since then, the council referred those changes back through the planning board process, um, and the planning board, um, accepted, uh, and recommended pretty much all of those changes, um, with the exception of a couple of, of differences. Um, I think the most, uh, the most notable, uh, changes, including those that the council wanted to accomplish as well as the planning board recommendations are, um, mixed-use properties, um, with the business also have to have a residence on them. Um, council had suggested that that, uh, residence be above the business. Planning board recommended that it be required to be on the same parcel, um, but not necessarily above the business.
Then that is a significant change from four point two?
From four point two, yeah. The, uh, a number of the uses that were raised as concerns, such as bed and breakfasts, restaurants, uh, below thirty seats, um, those went from permitted use, uh, staff-level approval to a public hearing and planning board level approval process. Um, restaurants over thirty seats, uh, were prohibited, um, as part of those changes. And there was really an effort to also try to recognize that there are, um, distinctions between areas of the more urban, compact, built-up neighborhoods. Um, and then as you get to the, the perimeter of those areas, they become more rural. Um, so in town, there are a lot of parcels that have not met the setbacks that we've had in the place since the sixties or seventies, and are actually closer to the road than twenty-five feet. And then as you move to the perimeter, there's the goal in the comp plan to see those areas eventually built out at a density that matches the in-town neighborhoods, but there's a recognition that, um, they're not there yet, so there's some flexibility on that front yard to potentially, and this is different than T four-two, be as little as five feet, um, as much as twenty-five feet, um, but also that consideration be given to the average depth of the front yards of the lots next to that, um, so there can be some flexibility in fairly soon build-out of any lots that have much more rural layouts as you get to the perimeter of that neighborhood. I think that hits on, on most of the differences. Um, our council, at the beginning of that process, had said that they were too substantive to just rely on the previous planning board recommendation. There have since been some changes made, um, through the continued discussion at planning board and council. Um, and we recommend that it goes back to planning board, um, before it gets adopted so that there's a very clean, um, concise version. Um, all of the new text will be clearly underlined, instead of just the text that is different than the. than the T42. So it shows all of it as the creation of a new district as well as having the map included so really the planning board will know what the final text that the council would like to see considered is, know the area that it applies so they can have it in that context of where it would apply for consideration, and hold a new public hearing and then send that back to council for public hearing and two readings.
Very good. Thank you. Might as well hang out, just in case. I'll open this up to the council for any questions or debate. Council Stapples?
Yeah, thanks. So, I really support this zoning, T42B, I was, T42 as well, actually. I think that it's, I think that it's the right thing to do. I think that it's good for the city and that's why I've supported it. However, I am the at-large counselor and I listen to the people of Auburn because you put me here. And 2,400 signatures for me is enough to support you. I feel that tonight, I don't agree with you, but I'm going to support you and I will vote no on this. Because I think that it's awesome to see so much civic participation. So I applaud you for being here. I wish I could agree with you, but I'm going to support you one way or the other.
Yes. Any other comments?
Yeah. I'd like to comment that I think that citizen participation is happening now due to an error of process over a four-year period of time in which a very small group got very excited about something that appealed to them but does not appeal to other people. And I think this type of zone is very appropriate in many of the neighborhoods, particularly in the downtown inner neighborhoods. However, as Mr. Hayes, former Councilor Hayes pointed out, former chairman of the planning board pointed out, Auburn is not one big neighborhood. It's a series of a number of different neighborhoods and it needs more time. Years ago, when we did strip zoning, I think Councilor Walker was probably not a councilor. I think he was probably working in the Parks and Rec, probably in the '80s. The planning director and a member of the planning board who was also a surveyor spent days, weeks, working on parcel by parcel. It's a lot of work to do zoning properly. Zoning is permanent. Zoning is long-term. You can't do this type of thing with short-term thinking, which is what we've been doing. It's a big mistake. That's why we had 2,400 signatures and there'll be further petitions if we succeed in doing what we shouldn't be doing. Big mistake.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, I'm going to ask for a vote on this. Again, this is to repeal this ordinance. Sue?
Councilor Hawes?
Yes.
Councilor Milks?
Yes.
Councilor Moran?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Councilor Staples?
No.
Councilor Gary?
No.
Councilor Whiting?
No.
The ordinance is repealed by a vote of 4-3. Moving on. We have Order 113-08012022 authorizing the marketing of city-owned property located at 86 Western Avenue. It's parcel ID 230-2026. As we go through this, Jake, could you just get the map up for that visual representation, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move.
Councilor Walker, second?
Second.
Second, Councilor Staples. Open this up to the public for comment. Any comment in the public on this? None being, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Council? Let's wait a second here before we open up debate. This is the Western Avenue parcel, okay? Councilors, any questions? We've worked up these parcels, actually a slightly larger list, but we've called some back due to potential need for the city use on the go-forward. Questions? None being? Okay, I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor of disposing of this or marketing of this property, please raise your hand. Pass at 7-0. Next, we have Order 114-08012022 authorizing the marketing of city-owned property located at 129 Winter Street, parcel ID 260-022. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 192. There's an error on the agenda. It's 192, Winter Street, 192. I'm sorry. Councilor Walker, was that?
Motion, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Councilors. Whiting?
Can we pause for a second?
Oh, pause for a second.
Mayor, I just want to make sure we have this correct. Jay, on the map, this is 192. We correct?
Yes, it is 192.
Okay, so it's 192.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the order as written to 192, Winter Street.
Yeah, I've got a motion on the floor to amend this address to 192 versus 129. Do I have a second? Second for Councilor Moran. All those in favor of the amendment? Pass at 7-0. Okay, back to the original motion. Anybody in the public like to speak on this topic? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Council, debate? Ask for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Pass at 7-0. Next, Order 115-08012022 authorizing marketing of city-owned property located at 104 Newberry Street. It's the parcel ID 221-067. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Staples, Councilor Milks on the second. Public, anybody want to comment?
Quickly, I said 103.
103. Agenda, this is 104. The next one's 103. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to go back and make a mistake. This is 103. 103, Newberry. It's out of order on my agenda or on the map sequence. So we got 103.
The order, Order 115 is 104.
104, I'm sorry, 104. I'm sorry, 104, then that was it. So we got 104 up on the map now?
Mayor, I think what probably best to do is to, do we have a motion already?
Want to change it?
Amend this motion to authorize the marketing of 103, Newberry Street.
Okay, that's, even though that's the next one?
The next one should be 115.
Point of order is, is 104 not to be considered? Is that what we're saying?
We have 104 right up here, too. That's where we're on.
I would move to amend as noted by the city manager.
Hold on, hold on, one second, please. We have 104 and we have 103.
It'll be 115. I believe the order number is 115 on the previous one. I think that's where the typo came in. But the one I'm looking at right on your next order on Newberry Street is 115. So I would make the amendment to 103 and then move forward with 115. Both of these on the same side of the road, they would be odd numbers. It won't be 104.
Right. 104 is one that we wanted struck.
Yeah.
104 is what we wanted to strike. Okay.
Sorry, Mayor, we'll... Counselor, if you would feel better, I would recommend we go ahead and not move forward with this or the next one. It should be brought before you and should be proper notification to the public.
These addresses are wrong. I'm going to, I'm actually going to take a motion to table. Order 115-08012022.
So moved.
Do I have a motion, Councilor Whiting? Do I have a second? Second for Councilor Moran. All those in favor?
To a time, actually, for a 30-day period.
Yeah, for a 30-day period. I got a motion, Councilor Whiting agrees. Second for Councilor Moran. All those in favor of a 30-day table? Okay, pass at 7-0.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On the one that we did at, that said it was 129 and then was 192, should we do the same thing if this was advertised wrong?
The notification was 192. It was the order that was, that was wrong. But the actual mapping was 192.
Thank you.
So next, we have a similar concept here. We have Order 116-08012022 authorizing the marketing of city-owned property located at 103, Newberry Street, parcel ID 221-058. Do I have a motion? I'd like to entertain this and then make a motion and then we can act accordingly.
So moved.
Second. Councilor Staples, second for Councilor Milks. Open this up to the public for comment. Did anybody come for this? What I'd like to do at this point is have this failed at this point. We can reintroduce this on our next meeting or we can table it for 30 days up to the council, whoever makes a motion first. But we should make sure proper notification and the right addresses go up.
Motion to table for 30 days.
A motion from Councilor Hawes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Pass at 7-0. Good. Now we're going to move on to 369 Main Street. I'll give a second for, okay, good. Next, we have Order 117-08012022, which is authorizing the marketing of city-owned property located at 369 Main Street, parcel ID 221-044. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Councilor Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilor Milks? Open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Council, debate? None? Ask for a vote. All those in favor? Next, we have Order 118-08012022 authorizing the marketing of city-owned property located at 351 Main Street. It's parcel ID 221-048. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Councilor Walker, second, Councilor Staples. Open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Council? Nothing? Ask for a vote. All those in favor? Pass at 7-0. Next, we have Order 119-08012022 authorizing the marketing of city-owned property located on Vicary Road. It's parcel ID 183-029. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Councilor Staples. Open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak?
Do we have an address?
There is no address.
There is no address, actually. It's kind of, no address. Have to take care of that.
It's an unapproved property, so therefore there's no address.
There we go. Thank you. So now I'll bring it back to the council. Council, anything? None? Okay, ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor? Pass at 7-0. Next, we have Order 120-08012022 authorizing the marketing of city-owned property. It's called Winter Oak. Parcel ID 191-101. Same thing, unapproved. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Walker and Staples on the second. Open this up to the public for comment.
Mr. Mayor, I would just make note that this is off of South Main Street.
Off of South Main Street, correct. Public comment, none. Bring it back to the council. Counsel? Comment, debate? None being, ask for a vote. All those in favor? Approves, 7-0. Open this up to the last open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business which did not appear on tonight's agenda. Members that would like to speak, step up to the podium. Name, address, three minutes, please. Would anybody like to speak? None being? I'll bring it back to the council and close out the last open session of the night. Under reports, committee reports. Start over here. Councilor Staples?
Nothing at this time.
Down the Ryland Road. Councilor Walker? Moran?
Nothing, thank you.
No.
No? Councilor Hawes?
All set, thank you.
Councilor Whiting?
All set, thanks.
Councilor Gary?
All set, thank you.
Nothing on my end. It's summer. It's summer. So our next meeting will be August 15th. Mr. Manager?
I would just note that Brian Wood, our Assistant City Manager, and myself will be attending the MT-CMA, which is the Main Town City County Managers Association Conference next week. This will be several recent topics that will be discussed, housing being one of them, LD 2003. I will be on the panel with another town manager to discuss that and impacts within the community. But we will bring back any pertinent information that we receive.
Very good. There are no executive sessions at this time. At this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Councilor Milks, Councilor Staples. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We now stand adjourned. Have a great night.